Okay, yeah, so just getting started playing a Mars named mold. I'm not sure who he is about seventy ping or something like that um. So somewhere a little bit far away um. Yeah, he was doing a lot of stuff right, but. Have he's a little predictable like he's definitely just not as good of like as like a player as like maybe like. The best Mars or whatever, but he he knew a lot of stuff and he hit a lot of the basics right and. He wasn't really doing any take laser fair stuff, so I didn't get to practice against that, but I was practicing against against a bunch of other stuff, so. Let's see, I'm just gonna write down every time I get hit. Okay, actually, I kinda wanna write down a bunch of stuff, so this time is when. He starts the game with the fair and I can get a punish. Okay, so Mars love to start the game. With short hop off platform fair. And then I'll say answers. Or I'll just say something like laser. Seems to be the best so far. I I do think the laser is the best option against this. I tried a bunch of stuff cuz a lot of times they'll just aerial well, okay. Dare isn't awful, but you have to dare. Grab, I think it's hard to with punish. Are you going to up upload this on YouTube? Maybe we'll see how it goes. It's hard to with punish. With a late there. So at zero, it doesn't true combo. Okay. I'll just say best so far and that's good enough. Okay, and so this is like I'm not, I don't know, I'll I'll be talking about some stuff, but a lot of this is just I'm kinda just. Right now my brain is super squishy like I'm just kinda like alright, I'm gonna let the game. I'm gonna let the game tell me like what's going on, you know, cuz it's it's. A lot of times like, oh, I need to hit this better or whatever, and I'm just gonna kinda take a step back and just look at it objectively. And kinda see um how the game plays out. Okay, so okay, I'm gonna ignore the punishes for the most part. I'm gonna be probably working on punish another time. I'm more looking at specific situations right here. Okay. DI to top platform, then look for. Um SDI way SDI up and away opportunities. I remember Ginger saying the most. This is ma- uh mallow SSB says, I remember Ginger saying the most safe option off rip is just drop through laser. But it feels like there's more to think about um. I think drop through laser is really good. I don't think there's anything wrong with it. It's not as much about that exact opening. Because a lot of times you drop through laser like right here and then the Marth. Will still like you go pew and Marth jumps off and you still have to deal with this situation where Martha is short hopping off. Almost every single marathon unranked will jump off and do like short hop fair or near. To start the game, so I'm just kinda looking for like, okay, what's the best option? My guess is the best option is gonna be approaching high laser up tilt. So I'm gonna lab that in a little bit, so. Okay, so I'm just gonna put this here test high laser up tilt. Because off of Marth short hopping off a platform, he's higher up than on these short hop approaches, so. I have to just consider that and try this out later. Okay, also this little shortened to the edge. I'm not gonna write this down cuz I already know this now, but like this. Like this little shorten is so good. This one wasn't as good, but I'll do like really lo- really low shortens to the edge and. The nice thing is that it's very difficult for them to react to your side B at all cuz it's so close. And then if they're a little bit late on their down tilt, they miss and if they're if they jab, they also miss like they just completely miss you. Um. So that's pretty nice. I've been doing it and kinda getting back against every Marth, just like side be shortened to edge really low and they always go for the jab. Or they cuz that's like their their reaction move, you know? The up tilt would be money. Yeah, that's my thought. Okay. Okay, yeah, so this is. Pretty obvious like. If Mars is in the air. Probably don't dare. Probably cuz there might be like mistech setups or something. Probably don't dare, so this is like the majority of the time I just and this is one everybody knows, right? But like. Apparently, you know, something in my brain is like, okay, we're gonna dare right here. And it's just not a good like if he's in the air at all, I should be either fairing or near or up air, honestly, anything except for the dare here would be better. Okay. And I changed what I'm doing quite a bit through all these games. I was trying out a lot of different stuff to see. I was just kinda like trying to harvest a bunch of info. Wait, how did I get hit here? What did I do? What hit me? Cuz I was I'm gonna write down all the things that hit me, I think. Oh, it was that dumb down air. It was the dumb down air. That's what I did. Right? Wait, what hit me here? Oh, okay, mess up an edge guard. Okay, yeah, I did that that stupid drop shine there. I swear I can let me see. Okay, so oh, oh, so that's what it looks like. I didn't actually know what the startup of side B look like frame to frame. Okay, so what happens to Martha when he side bees? Dude, I hate that the character can go like behind the stocks. That's whack. Okay, so let's say when it turns red, that's easier to react to. Okay, so let's see from the frame it turns red. Uh, I I was too, I got too too greedy pressing forward. Okay. Okay, so he does this weird pose. So this is one. Two, okay, so he turns red on frame two and then. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Eleven, twelve. Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Okay, well, he could do some weird double side B here. But I think I'd be at low enough percent that I'd be fine. What would I do here? Shine down air maybe cuz he's holding forward. Like short hop off backwards shine down air. So like when he's in this position. Cuz I'm thinking he's gonna fast fall double jump to the edge, so I'm doing this right here. And I feel like if I hadn't fast fall, I could have definitely done a shine down here right here. And so I think that's probably the best option. Right there. Try shine there on side. Wouldn't double jump bear hit his side B lag? Nah, because I grabbed ledge. Is the mic a little quiet? Here I can move it closer. Hey, how's that? How's that? I feel like the mic is just like not picking things up quite as loudly right now for whatever reason. Not sure why. Hmm, I could I can see it on my screen. It's not. It's not quite as loud. But I've already turned the volume all the way up. Okay. Let me just see. Uh, okay. Whatever. Okay. So. Alright, let's just get through this. Yeah, so right there. Oh, I wanna grab the edge. What happens if I grab edge? Let's just say I grab edge. Let's say I can't react to his thing. But I can definitely react to that. See, I feel like I can double jump down air here. Um, try shine there on side B. Try drop double jump dare bear. See, I don't like to. I don't like using the double jump though. That's the thing. That's what I don't like. So I like the shine cuz the shine, yeah. Yeah, I'm actually actually I'm not gonna do that cuz the issue is that if you. Cuz like the double jump back air thing and I this is what I've been thinking about cuz I've gotten hit by it a bunch of times. It's like if you assume the double jump back air. Then sometime, I mean, I guess if you do it invincibly, but then, you know. Taking this time and then like when I drop, he instantly grabs, which is the same thing that would go wrong from. You know, look, going for like the drop double jump back air instead of the drop. Shine, but like right here, I feel like I can definitely drift into him and get him. His second side be hit goes in like kinda this spot, so like. That's why I don't like double jumping here. Can I down smash his head? Nah, look at this. There's no way. Unless I'm like right at the tippy tip. Yeah, exactly. So I feel like right here, if I don't do this fast fall and I just keep drifting into Marth, I should be able. To do it and like the thing I've been thinking about, tip and thinking about a lot of this stuff like at zero like. If I'm at low percent, the edge guard on Marth is so strong. Like I actually think Falco might have a completely guaranteed edge guard on Marth at if I'm at zero. And I think there's different edge guards for higher percents versus lower percents, and I'm just kinda realizing this right now. Or like not like right the second, but like recently and it's like whoa, like it's a pretty big change. Yeah, that's what I'm saying uh. Cece Zero, whatever. I don't know how to say it um, but uh. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's why I wrote down the try the shine dare cuz like this thing with the shine back air is if he still has his. Wait, is this arrow like the? Are you? Is this like the young link arrow like the guy from the locals or is this somebody else? No, okay, yeah, cuz there's a guy who goes to my locals and his name is Arrow and it's spelled that same way, so I can I can call you that, but like. Falco Arrow. From the Midwest. Okay, yo, SP ninety nine, this guy's a celebrity in this chat. I learned like some of the most fundamental things about Falco from the articles he wrote. It's like actually like the knockback stacking one like changed my whole life. I would have gone so long without understanding that if I hadn't read your article. And now it's just like, yeah, totally makes sense like easiest thing ever. So like you actually taught me more about Falco than a lot of people, so. Yeah, that one in particular, that's the one that sticks out is like that super taught me the concept like easy peasy. About knockback stacking. Okay, nice. Link that article. I don't have it, but I'm surely SP ninety nine can link you. I need to like reread all those other ones. I just need to like go through and just refresh all the Falco knowledge anyway. Okay, so yeah, the shine. Even the shine dare, I felt the shine dare definitely will kill here. The shine back here if he does like like here's the thing is like he saves his double jump. Like he hasn't even used his double jump, which is the purpose of this. You do this instead of the double jump. So like if he does this instead of the double jump, I wanna kill him for it and I think. The shine down is probably the best like it's awkward cuz it's like the shine turnaround down here. I'll try both, I guess, but. Actually. Actually, wait a second. Wait a second. Wait, okay. Is he hmm? Okay, wait a minute. Wait just a second. I hmm, wait a second. Okay, just let me see this. If you don't turn on Marth, couldn't Marth tech it? I don't think he can tech it. Not from that far away. Also, what's up, Zenzu? Okay, oh, wait. Cuz this is already open. I don't wanna close this. Alright, alright, I'll write the note and then once I move on, I'll do it, so um. Side B at edge forty six percent can you? Do cuz here's my idea is maybe you can do shine knockback stack there into something else. Cuz like maybe Martha's at like. Ten percent or something. Let's say I'm in a situation where Martha's here and Martha's at ten. What if I can get like a like a shine? Knockback stack down air into another shine here or something like that or like an up tilt. And I can get a lot of mileage off of that, you know? If you're facing the stage. You take notes like such a programmer. I I am, man. I can't. I don't know what to say. That's me. Okay, and then, okay, whatever. So yeah, that's enough of that situation, but it is something that definitely comes up. What was? What did I do here? Those wrong? Yeah, right there. I should probably just like double jump air dodge. Okay, I'm not even gonna write that, though. No, I think you're thinking of the of different situation than I am, Zendo. Okay, man, I took a long time for like. Been streaming for twenty minutes and that was the first twenty seconds of that game. Of the first game out of like twenty games. I could just sit here for like days. Okay, so I see this, so when I even, okay, I I went too far. Okay. I know I'm not. I'm not talking about offstage. I'm saying you get the shine knockback stack there on the DIN and then. You land on the stage and they come. They're like also like landing on the stage and then you come with them. That's what I'm saying. It that's why I wanted to show you. I'll show you guys in a little bit. Okay. Okay. Watch for roll out of the corner more. I'll just say corner there. It's just something to remind myself of because I forget about it. I keep. I'm thinking so much about the grab and stuff. I just forget about the role. Okay, so let me look at this again. Okay, so when I hit. When I hit this laser, okay, dude, this is this is something I really need to do, so. Alright, I'm just gonna draw this out, explain a little bit better. It's like if. If if if, okay, that's okay, so that's fine. So it's like if here's the stage and. Martha's in the air right here and he has his fare out or whatever and I am, you know, here. And I get a laser out. Then like when it hits Marth. He it stops his momentum and he ends up with this cone that looks like this. And then. Or like, yeah, this is the important part cuz it doesn't really matter how far he can go back, right? So. What I need to do is every time I hit Marth with a laser. Right here. I need to then go to here. That's what I'm saying, so I need to like recognize how high up in the air my laser hit Marth. And how much space that gives me. That is like so important, I think, because like he can't get out of that situation. Like you're not fast enough to hit him and he has his fair to protect himself. But it stops his momentum, so it gives him like a really defined drift code. Sipping on my horchata. Delicious. Okay. So, okay, this is a big one. So I'll just do like this big one. I'm gonna do it in all caps, so it's like, okay, how would I even say this? Like, okay, I didn't need to say it. Okay, once you. Okay. If you confirm. A laser hits on Marth while he's in the air. You also have to confirm. Confirm his furthest. Drift fair drift towards you fa- drift. Wait, drift. Drift towards you fair. You confirm a laser hit on Marfoys in the air. You also have to confirm his furthest drift towards you fair. Okay. Then depending on how much time you have. Based on his height that the laser hits. Take an appropriate amount of space with another laser with. Usually another laser. Alright, that's my that's my note. So if I can hear the laser hit on Martha while he's in the air, then. Do you figure out ex- yeah, I this is my first draft, okay? So I'm cuz this is I'm just trying to figure this out cuz this is like I need to. I've like thought of this before and then I've lost it, so I'm like, okay, this is super important. If I get the laser. Like if I'm hitting this laser, so let me oops dot 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 dot. Okay, so if I'm getting this laser, so this is like a grounded laser, so I'm kinda just dashing around never. Ever shield the laser against Marth. See, the problem is is shielding this power shielded laser is so money against Fox. That's the problem. It's super money against Fox and that makes it awful against more. It's just horrible against more. Okay. Never shield after a laser. Will never shield. After a laser. To try and power shield it back. Only shield after lasers. If you can easily, if you can reach Marth from your shielded. Shielded position. Okay. Okay, yeah, so this guy actually barely power shield, which was great for me because I was just trying really hard to focus. On the non power shield situations. I feel like the power shield situations are actually like. Very easy and like winning for Falco like I I'm not that good at him yet, but like they they seem very clear. It's the take laser stuff that like. Kinda gets me sometimes. But um, let me see. When does the layer two mind game begins with confirming Falco laser? I I don't. I thought it was like a question. Oh, it's squid. What's up squid? Okay. Um, you can CC buffer jump. Off the power shield laser to dare Marth moving forward off the power shield. Yeah, I've definitely considered the laser crouch. Oh, you have like a GIF of this. Interesting. Okay, I'm gonna pull this up. SP ninety nine with the clutch. Okay. So is that what you did here? I do think CCing the reflected laser is a super good idea. Self flagellate. Thank you for the prime sub. Yeah, it's a great emote. I love that emote. Yo, squid with the prime. Thank you. Okay, so you press jump during the laser hit stun to get a buffer jump. Can you explain to me? How to buffer jump out of his stunt? How's that work? Like. What's the buffer like for this? Cuz I thought it was. I feel like I I understand it for like double jumping, I thought, but I thought I don't. I just didn't don't know about the buffering. Like, are you saying? Yeah, like, are you? Are you saying like the control stick? That's what I'm a little bit confused at. It's like when you double jump. But like, so you do you need to use? So it's any jump. So what's the? Yeah, what's the uh window? What's the window off of the laser? Twenty frames? Okay. Really? So like if you press Y during the laser stun at any point, you will jump. Is that what you're saying? Is that why it's so easy to double jump off of a laser hitting me when I tried to short hop laser again? That kinda makes sense. With no CC, it's like nine frames? Okay, that's crazy. Okay, okay, I didn't realize that was how that worked off of like a grounded laser hit. That's sick. Okay, I'll remember that. That the CC makes the wait, so but the thing is the laser stunt on when you CC is like. Not that much. Not twenty cuz it's not that much like. Yeah, yeah, exactly. So it's like you have like a. Yeah, yeah, okay, I'm definitely gonna write this one down. So it's like experiment with. Laser crouch. Buffer jump. Okay. Okay. I was gonna give you, so I just remember like, oh, yeah, that was that thing SP ninety nine told me. Okay. Laser stun is, yo, what's up, Flinchy? We got all the Falcos in here. Laser stun is less, so you can act sooner. But it's like a fry five frame window. Yeah, that makes sense. No, I feel like that. Okay, I get it now. That's sick. Thank you. Dude, SP ninety nine is still teaching me Falco stuff. That's sick. Okay, Falco is just such a sick character, character infinitely complex. It's actually crazy. Okay. See, the thing is before is what happened was um. I never used to shield after laser against Marth, but at close range, laser shield is actually pretty good. Because he wants to like. Act. He wants to like jump in there and stuff like that, so if you do laser shield in close range and he jumps in with a near, you just get a shine and shield, you know? So. That's pretty good. Okay. And yeah, so basically. Right now I'm kinda one way or the other, where if I think about laser shield, then I kinda start doing the laser. Power shield like power shield the laser back thing I do against Fox. And it's just bad. First of all, cuz Martha a lot of times like does dash back power shield. And then it'll totally change the timing and then I'm just stuck in shield. I can't even get any distance out of my laser. That's like the biggest one. Then the other one is just like, even if I get a laser like that's not like lasering again is just not as quite as good against Marth, I feel like. Okay. Let me see what's up with this. Okay, I don't care about any of this stuff. Okay, yeah, run under shield. I don't know why I think this is something to do. Okay, yeah, okay. If Marth is above you. If he's. Looking, okay, so if he's in front of you, look, okay, so I'll just say. Martha's above you one high laser. Something two. Up air. If low percent. So that way, if like I try to up air and he like down airs or something, I can just hit him. Um, up tilt. Or. Dash back crouch. And then. Never shield, please stupid. Shield only. I just need to shield is only good. Shield is only good. Oops, good when he full drifts in. Okay. Yeah, so the shielding is bad. Okay, I see, so. Let's see, how's this laser work? Dude, this matchup is so complicated. I'm gonna need to study this for like a year or something. Okay, so not this one. This is bad. Dude, okay, like. Yeah, so it's like the turnaround laser thing doesn't really that good. I wanna be. Approaching. Big goal is approaching laser. Just barely outside. Of his. Outside, oops, of his. Approaching laser. Retreating in place is only really good for. Um, damage. Okay, are you DF five, okay, so I actually didn't, okay, yeah, so I, I haven't read the, um. The laser article yet, can somebody link the, the laser article? I'll, I'll read it pretty soon. Yeah, it was like the jump notation thing, that's what it's called. Read it on stream, I'll do it really quick. But I feel like, how long is it? Okay, so no, this is kinda complex, I'm trying to stick with my Martha stuff right now, okay? I'll, I'll get to it later. I'll read it on stream for the fans at like a very different point, yeah, no, I'm sure it's good, like. I'm totally down to learn this, like. It seems like we needed this for a long time, so. Can you just like, is there like any way you can describe really quickly, like just what you mean by DF five laser, like it can't be that complicated? Cuz this is just notation, so like, what are these lasers? Like. Dude, I'm just gonna find. Okay. So DB dash back neutral stick, is that what it is? Dash back neutral jump? Not, like, I don't do a neutral jump laser, I do backflip lasers. I do dash back and then backflip laser. Right? Isn't that like what, how? How Falco works, or? I'm down to like talk about this a little bit more, this is pretty interesting. Neutral jump, drift forward out of shield and dare. J fifty, oh, J five six dare. Oh, so you're saying like go, you're moving forward, oh, okay. The backflip laser is usually not the one you want. I don't know what you're talking about. Like you're saying I need like a neutral jump pivot laser, or? Cuz the backflip makes it super consistent, right? So am I supposed to do like, jump back, let go of back? Neutral B, is that what you're saying, like? Like before and doing that like before. The, um, jump squad is over? Like I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what you're saying. Mm-hmm, okay. Wait, right jump? What? Right, jump down left. Release. Dude, talking about the game through text is impossible. Even with the notation. You roll a stick from the card into the opposite diagonal during jump squad. Huh. I definitely don't do that. I mean, I'd be down. But I am trying to do the Martha stuff right now, but I'd still be down, but, uh. Yeah, I've never thought about that motion. Mango DB fives all day, which, what is, dude, I gotta. Do you have like a GIF of the laser, like if I could just see the laser? That would help so much. The last GIF has the Falco lasers? Oh, I didn't see that. Oh, dude, I just didn't see this, my bad. So you, so you're saying I'm doing. It's so confusing cuz he's not doing the. So you're saying Mango does this one? Is DF six the backflip one? Oh no, D, DB, DB six is the backflip one? Wait, so how do I do this differently, it's, you're saying it's like a, it's like a half drift? Dude, I don't wanna watch your stupid, whatever that was. Mm-hmm, I see. I know, I get it now, it makes sense to me now, but. Dude. How do I not get them to like start changing what they're showing? Oh, there it is, okay, it was like, oh, it's hidden by this thing. Okay, there we go. Thank you. Explain the motion in the article? Okay, so you're saying. It's like. You're just saying it's forty-five degrees back, right? Man, I wanna do this so badly now. Okay, I feel like this is more important and I'll go back to this, the Martha stuff in one second. Cuz now I really wanna try this. Okay. So. So I'm doing like this, right? And you're saying I should do. That one? Is that the one you're talking about? Hmm, okay. Yeah, that's actually so important. Yeah, it's why I love Falco, he just goes on forever, I'm like, nowhere close to being good with him. I feel like I don't have good accuracy in this spot, I feel like it's really hard for me to do, what was the, you said it was the. The forty-five degree thing? Dude, it's really funny that that YouTube profile picture came from before I even played Falco. It was just cuz it was from the Ice Clambers video. Yeah, I'm working on these like retreating lasers. Rather than, could I do too many of these, and these are so good, but not against Martha, not against Martha. Yeah, I think actually it's just so ridiculously critical to like. Be able to like laser in the exact spots you want for Falco, like I think it's. Like critically underused to be like perfect. At the, or like people underestimate that, I should say. Yeah, like it's just so. Hard to do them all, to do them the same way every time. Definitely the hardest character. Yeah, I definitely don't do these lasers nearly enough. Okay, I think I got it down. Yeah. I, I learned to like respect the opinions that Ginger had on Falco. While simultaneously acknowledging that like he's. Kinda like. He's like very into his own model and like, so he could be like, no, this is the worst thing ever. And then later when he's, when he's like tries it more, he's like, oh no, that's good, you know, that's how I feel about it, so like I feel like. He has a lot of really good info on the character, but like, you still have to like look at stuff on your own, that's all I'm trying to say. Like just cuz me or Ginger or somebody tells you something's bad, you should still try it. Yeah, dude, I never do these lasers, I, I actually feel so dumb, thank you so much for telling me to do them. It's actually crazy how I never do these. With Falcon, I can do the retreating high ones, oh man, yeah, cuz I'm always stuck doing that, it's like, no dude, just delay it a little longer. No, that's actually crazy, I literally never do this. Yeah, cuz then you get this one, which is I think the one I'm looking for. Because that's right, that's gonna be right outside of Martha's like fair, I actually can see that, that's crazy, right? That's, that's right there, that's why I never hit that. Okay, okay, that's a huge one. That's crazy. Yeah, well, thank you, well. There we go, see, I just got better, I just got way better. Thank you, that's easy. Man, I love Falco because it's so easy to get better, people just tell you, they're like, hey, here's this major Falco concept you missed, and you're like. Oh, good point, guess I'll, guess I'll learn that now, imagine mating Captain Falcon. And they're, and they're just like, ah, man, I don't know, he's just kinda nair at him. DF five versus Falcon made set, you hate me, interesting. Interesting, okay, this is actually very important. Ooh. Ooh, see, I've been thinking about using. See, I've been thinking, um. About using like dash shield stop. Laser there, but, but this is definitely like faster, right, like you get the laser out way quicker. I see, okay, wait, so how do you do this one, is this one like forward down, jump? Down, like jump B down? Hmm, I need to learn this one too, okay, so I'm just gonna write this down. Okay, so what was that called, the, the DF five laser? No, DB five, it was DB five, yeah. Yeah, how did I not know about that, man, I'm so dumb, whatever, thank you. You just, okay, DF five, you forward jump release, okay, that makes total sense, okay? DB five and DF five grind, please. Okay. Yeah, it's actually crazy, I just didn't know that. I'm, I'm keeping this though, I'm keeping these, okay? Well, now we're back on the Martha games. He's gonna cut Mango me frenzy flash arrow, no, I can already, like, you saw me doing those back and forth ones, like that is definitely. The spacing that like I wasn't getting, dude, Falco is so sick. I love Falco. I'm undecided on this back air here, but whatever, I'm not gonna think about punish, punish this for later. Right now, I'm just thinking about these situations. What's up Panda? How's it going? Okay. Wait, so it's like, um, we're all fifty-four minutes and I'm thirty seconds into the first game still. This is how melee analysis goes, see, look at me, I'm trying to do all this nonsense right here. Like I'm trying to do like, like I do my, my DB six and then. yeah, and then I do like dash shield stop laser, it's like dude, dash, power shield, high laser is anti Fox, like I can't like I just, I'm just like, man, if it works against Fox, it's gotta work against everybody else, you know? Oh, you like the radio melee thing? That's sick, I thought, it was pretty fun. I think it was fun, alright. Let's see. Ah, look away. Nobody look at that, please. It's 2am, oh, good night man, thank you so much for your help. Thank you, have a good night. Okay. Did I do one here? Did I do, did I do the DB5 here? No, I didn't, I did the backflip laser, okay. Oh, but I almost did it there, where I didn't need to do it at all, I could have totally done the DB6. Okay, yeah, there's a lot, okay, so that was good, whatever, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be like, oh, this is good, this is bad, I need to get through these, there's a lot of stuff I need to look at. Okay, whatever. Okay, wait a second, let me see this, okay, I gotta, does anybody here, okay, like, let's say like Ober, anybody here, what, what do you do between stocks against Marth? Do you have like a consistent algorithm to like deal with between stocks? Are you going to any of the international smash tournaments? I hope so. Don't take a weekend kid. That's funny. I'm glad you, you liked it though. Full hop shine stall. Flash does run through Marth, light shield and hard read every grab with spot dodge. Okay. Oh, you like the radio melee too? Thank you. Uh, goon, goon maybe? Is it goon? Like she'll unplat looking away to get shield pushed maybe. Dash dance in the corner mix up going through. The ledge one, I don't really, I'm trying to not do a ledge dash except on FD, like I'm down to ledge dash on FD. The other stages, like I have kinda mixed results with like shielding and like stuff like that, I'm just not sure yet, but I can feel that it's there, I think the light shield on platform stuff is, is probably gonna be it. Like at some point, that's gonna be like doing something out of that situation is definitely the best. And there's probably several tree branches you have to follow, like if Marth is, like if, let's say you're light shielding here. And then, let's say you're light shielding here, right? And then Marth, um because my goal is to not, I don't know, dude, I, I can't decide this, because basically I go back and forth, right now I'm still going back and forth on whether I think Falco is good on platforms compared to Marth, or like against Marth, like I think you can, I think Falco generally should win the interaction up here, but I just always mess it up, but I do think Falco kind of wins if Marth is trying to come up to him on the platform. So, so like if you're comfortable on the top plat, then like you could go on side plat, and then if Marth drops right here, you can get a full hop here and then you'd be totally safe from anything, that's like one option. Just not sure, but then I'm like here and he just like comes down with this down air thing and maybe I should just like drop here and I'm like roll or something like that, I don't know, there's something, I need to like find a Marth who's down to like just grind this one specific thing and be like, okay, you're invincible, and then try to get me to die again, and alright, try to get me this time. I gotta figure out a Marth who's down for that. Okay. Because this is jump, going into the side plant and just full hopping, which is what I do is not the case, I think if I had right here, let's say I just did the light shield. But the thing is, here's another thing I thought of, you shouldn't just hold the light shield early. So like, I should just go up here like this and like hold light shield right here, I think that would be pretty strong. And then, just like wave dash, light shield as the first action, I think that's really good, because if he guesses wrong, then he loses some time. And then, unless he's on, yeah, okay, that's like definitely the best, okay, I think that's actually by far the best, it's just gonna be light shielding on the side platform every time. I'm just gonna start doing that literally every time and then I'll get better at playing it out, I think. Platform, each stock, each entrance. Ability period. For practice. If Marth goes low, just full hop to top what? Your SK92s set in Evo 2009? That's sick. Wait, that's super sick Panda, I had no idea. It's cool to hear that. Okay. Wish SP99 is still here, but I understand. Okay, yeah, this was bad, at least you, you other, you other people here, still, I'm just like, man, he taught me something new within like twenty minutes, that's crazy. Yeah, no, Panda is definitely the fiction super fan, I appreciate it a lot. Okay, here, I think I finally caught this roll. See, here's where the shield isn't that bad, I think. Is when you can like get a good drift read on him, like right here, I definitely could have shined it, fielded, I think, maybe? Or at least get it, like I can like short hop back air pressure here probably. Okay, whatever, there's like so many things I'm doing wrong that I can't even like I can't even get it all, it's just like everything, it's like, oh, okay, this is still the first game, I need to watch through more. But I'm getting absorbed in like, why did I lose that? Okay, I don't care about that, I know, I know how not to get hit by that, I was just thinking about stuff while he was on the ledge. Ledge dash up tilt is a joke against Falco. Okay, I don't know what I'm doing. Oh, I was curious about this. Like if he hits me with side B. I'm not getting comboed, am I? I can shine it, right? Oh. Oh, that does so much stun. I've been a falcomane for six years, yo, that's sick, Zamorita, I'm hyped to hear that. Dude, just, just learning that DB5 laser is crazy. Okay, whatever, just don't look at a lot of this. This is the thing I was, I was thinking of, is look at this. Is like at low percent against Marth, I can just read and go for a roll. You know, but then like, if I get hit, I just jump up and I kill him or hit him. It's like, it's like a, it makes the low percent edge guards so like super strong, even if right here, like if he fared me, I don't think I don't think he can get, get me in, the double jump works there anyway. See, there's that between stocks jump I do instead of the, the light shield. It's a bad habit, it's so good against other characters though. This character is super unique in how you have to play against him. Okay, does the, I should probably dash back there, this is not a bad combo though. I think this was, this was super good actually. Like this into this, into that, into that, into this, I think this is, like this is probably correct, right? Would any, anyone in chat disagree? Like, do you think there's a better combo I could have done here? Us, like after this part, like after this? It's probably, like this is, this is probably just like a near, right? Am I crazy? Like a video game character in an RPG, just gathering stats. Slowly. Okay. Yeah, you got a near, right? Yeah, and then like here, you probably have to up tilt. And then here, I'm not sure on up air, or or maybe yeah, I can't really yeah, weak bear would definitely get you reversed there, is there a jump? Yeah, definitely has a jump. Because I don't really like the back air ending it there, I'm trying to think of what I should have done instead. Like this makes sense, this makes sense, this makes sense. Could you do a second near after the first one? It wouldn't lead to anything, that's, that's what kinda bothers me, it's possible. Like if I did this super perfectly, no, because look, he's already out, like he would definitely fare me out of my near, a hundred percent. If he was like mashing. But the up tilt will definitely beat it. And then right here. I think I should just single hit up air right here. That's probably what I should do. Shield drop, double jump down here? Wait, I've never even conceived of that. Wait a second, that's I, that's crazy, why have I never done that? That's actually so good. Alright, I gotta try that out, I'm gonna write that down. That's actually such a good idea. Not, not really in this situation, but just in general, like if I have an easy punish on a move at like low percent, I can probably get something, something clean out of that. Not, not when they're at low percent, but like there's probably something interesting with that. Shield drop, double jump there. And this is from okay. Yeah, I'm just gonna like, I just hadn't thought of like doing a shield drop, double jump aerial to like beat out, or to negate Falco's awful jump squat, because I don't, you don't need it as Fox, you know? Here, I didn't know the knockdown percent and I'm trying to do like the tech thing. Like where you like buffer the tech here, because I was messing with like some shine. Here, uh, let me grab it. I was messing with some shine stuff. Okay. Yeah, I've been messing with stuff like this. Where you do like this. And like, that's pretty good. If you can get this, the situation right, but it doesn't knock down at the percent I thought it did, I need to look at like what the knockdown percent of this is. And then there's um this one. That's pretty good. And then the last one. Which is this one. Which I like a lot. Do this? No, I didn't. I wish I had. I definitely think there's, there's a use for this, like I've definitely lost this exact situation, where like my invi- not this exact one with like how much of his jump is left or anything, but like if the timing's slightly different and I'm here and I'm like, ah, I could just do the buffer tech. And it'd be so much nicer to hit that. Okay. Um. Anyway. But I thought I would get stage spiked at that percent, but I was wrong. Dash attack is so good in the corner. I just, I'm just gonna remind myself. Remember to fish for dash attack in the corner. When Marth is seventy plus. Okay. At sixty-three, the weak hit knocks down at seventy-three, I mean up B definitely knocks down earlier than six, like the strong up B definitely knocks down earlier than sixty-three. How many, I don't know how many hits are on Martha B though. But seventy-three helps, thank you Ober. Okay, I'm gonna just write that down, Marth up, Marth weak up B knocks down at seventy-three. Okay. Okay. I'm surprised that didn't work, whatever, it's actually ridiculous watching how bad my Falco is, but it's okay, it's all the learning process. Oh man, lay, look at these, these sad little D, DB6s. Okay, yeah, this is like classic stuff, like laser, laser. I gotta figure out what I wanna do in this spot. I mean, I definitely, yeah, but I know I have to grab the edge, I have to. And then he does this. I guess I have more time than I thought to get to him, so I can probably just hit up better, but I don't like the down air because he could have definitely just tech rolled that. I'm trying to like, what, I don't know what to do here. Okay, so I think, yeah, okay, so let's say I cover high here, I'm at low percent. But I don't wanna get clipped. Hmm. That, that situation comes up so much too. I think I think I can do grab edge, regular get up here and then get a shine. I'm gonna try that next time. Try edge grab, regular get up when it looks like he wants a horizontal air dodge to stage. I'm pretty sure I had it muted or like, I didn't really watch all that much of it. But I would have given you my opinion if I, if I heard it. Okay. Hmm. Dude, you know what's crazy? I feel like this is already like enough, so I'm gonna stop here, I'm not gonna end the stream. I'm gonna try to play a Marth or something for a little bit. Okay, let's reread the notes. Okay, let's reread the notes. Okay, Marth's love to start the game, short hop off platform fair. Yes, they do. Yeah, let's try the laser up tilt. Let's try try the laser up tilt on that short hop fair start. Okay, I got a DI to the top platform. Martha's in the air, probably don't dare. That makes a lot of sense. Shine dare on side B more often, okay? Okay, I'll get to that GIF in one second. Why? Let's see. It's a side view. And gee, I was looking, yeah, the knockback stack dare doesn't seem super feasible. It's just like an interesting idea. Might work against some character. Um, watch for roll out of the corner, yeah. Oh, if you confirm a laser hit on Marth while he's in the air, you also have to confirm his furthest drift towards you. His furthest drift towards you fair, then depending on how much time you have based on his height. But the laser hits take an appropriate amount of space. It's usually another laser. Yeah, I wrote this super badly the first time. But I understand what it's saying. Okay, never shield after a laser to try and power shield it back. Only shield after lasers if you can reach Marth from your shielded position. Yeah, just never shield after the laser when you're like mid distance. Laser crouch buffered jump. That's an interesting one. I feel like this one's, this one's very situational, so I'm not gonna worry about it too much yet, but it's it's a cool. Thing to explore later. Mars above you, look for the high laser as a first priority for sure. And never shield, please. Yes, never shield. Just don't do it. He's gonna drift back. You know he's gonna drift back. Big goals approaching laser just barely outside of his aerials. That's right. I gotta, I gotta get better at that. Like up smash? I don't. He. He gets out too easily. I like single hit up airs and stuff like that. Light shield on side, okay, DB five and DF five grind please. Okay, that's I'm gonna do. Light shield on side platform. Each invincibility, right? Okay. Mess with shield drop. Sherry, I remember that one. Remember to fish for dash attack in the corner. We could be knocked down at seventy-three and try edge grab regular get up when he's gonna, looks like he's gonna do the air dodge. Okay. So let's get some melee going. Not sure how long I'm gonna play, but oh, yeah, yeah, I'm gonna check out these chests really quick. Oh, gross. Fine. What is this? One sec. Oh, don't call it the bonfire tech. Not in this chat, please. The thunders tech. That's funny. Okay. Oh, you're saying you like to trade? What in the world? I don't know what I think of this combo. I would have just up tilted. This is a really, this is sick though. I I don't want, I'm not trying to discount this. I think this is actually. A super good and interesting thing. I'm gonna leave this up. It's just looks funny. You take a ton of damage. Mm-hmm, I saw those lasers too. Interesting. Up tilt loses to fair? Hmm, I see. Okay, I'll keep that in mind. Let's see, come on.